It is six o'clock. I'd like to welcome you to the Thursday, January 19th regular meeting of the Glen County Board of Commissioners. I will lead us in our invocation tonight, and I've asked Commissioner Tosterson to lead us in the pledge. If you'd stand with me, please. Father, we just thank you for the privilege of living in this beautiful community. We thank you, Father, for just the opportunity to serve in this community. We thank you for the work that our staff does. We thank you for our first defenders. We thank you for those that serve in our military and for their defense of the United States around this world. We pray that you would just give us your wisdom and guide us as we consider the items before us tonight. We pray that you would just walk with us, guide our path. May we lift you up and praise your name in all things. And it's in your most precious name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Do everyone face the flag? Hand on heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
We don't have any presentations or announcements tonight, but we do have a couple of agenda items to correct. If I could hear those, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move to add item 4.1 to the published consent agenda to approve the assignment of three sublease agreements between the Brunswick-Glen County Development Authority and the Golden Isles FBO Incorporated to Odyssey Gia Holdings LLC.
We have a motion by Commissioner Tosterson, a second by Commissioner Booker, to add item 4.1 to the published consent agenda. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Commissioner Fendig is still having some issues. He's joining us tonight via Teams. Commissioner Fendig, do I have your vote?
Yes, sir. Thank you, and aye on that vote also.
All right. So that is unanimous. I need to make an announcement. Do we have anything else on consent? Okay. I have an announcement to make concerning ZM 5321, 3741 Wiley Avenue rezoned will not be able to be held tonight as previously noticed. The application was deferred by the Mainland Planning Commission and will be re-noticed for our future Board of Commissioners meeting after the MPC takes action on this application. So if you are here tonight for that zoning, I apologize that we were not able to carry this out, and if you do not wish to stay, we certainly understand. Is there anyone here for that ZM 5321? Okay, well, good. Maybe we have an inconvenience to anyone. All right.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the consent agenda for general business.
I have a motion by Commissioner Rafalski, a second by Commissioner Booker, to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. Commissioner Fendig?
Aye.
Thank you. Moving to item five, this is a public hearing for an abandonment. Public hearings will be limited to 30 minutes for each opposing side, with five minutes allocated to each individual speaker. Comments are to be limited to relevant information regarding your position and should avoid being repetitious. If your group has a spokesperson, please allow that individual to present the group's position in the time allocated, and your cooperation in this matter is greatly appreciated. Excuse me. Item number five, AB 5006, consider the abandonment of a portion of the unopened Palm Street right-of-way in Block 19, Glen Haven subdivision, Glen County, Georgia, AB 5006, and this is behind 410 Pine Street. And Mr. Andrews, if you'll give us a narrative, please.
Commissioners, Paul Andrews, your county engineer. The item before you is for abandonment of half of an unopened road right-of-way, not alley right-of-way. This is a road right-of-way in Glen Haven subdivision, approximately 1,200 square feet, behind two parcels that front on Pine Street. Currently, it's unused by the public. My investigation into the utilities indicates there's no future use intended for it. The request was made by the property owner on Pine Street. Appears to have been no recent changes to the alley, and for your... The neighbors across Palm Street had already voiced opposition to this abandonment request several months ago, when the utility companies were out investigating the area to see if their utilities were in conflict. They sent an email at that time, followed up. The family of the property owners have sent several emails indicating they were in opposition to the request for abandonment. This is Frederica C. Island Road intersection, Glen Haven. Fourth block back is abandonment requested area. The gray areas are the paved roads. This section through Block 19 is not open to county standards and hasn't been paved. This is the area requested for abandonment behind the property at 410 Pine Street. The Palm Street dead ends here into fourth. This picture stands at the intersection of the pavement looking westward. This is the area of abandonment. This is a gravel driveway, goes up and accesses the house here. It's a U-shaped driveway. Closer up, this is from just off the edge of the area where the abandonment request is. Fence line here are the white pickets is approximately the area along Palm to be abandoned. Fence line here is the edge of the right-of-way. Other side of the clear is about the halfway point of the unopened right-of-way. So this would be the area where the abandonment request is for. As I said, our utilities in the area did not request retaining any easements over the area. Staff is requesting that a drainage easement, if this abandonment goes forward, a drainage is retained for future needs in Glen Haven. Just for your information, approval of this, if the board decides to approve this request, Palm Street will become a dead-end street in that the remaining right-of-way is not wide enough to improve as a street, but there won't be any ability to install cul-de-sacs at those dead ends. Not the first time we've done it in Glen Haven, but I just wanted to make you all aware. Also, access to the two existing lots across Palm Street, those lots would remain accessible only through the 20-foot of the remaining right-of-way. It's a sketch that I put together, a close-up of that area. The red would be the half of the Palm Street right-of-way to be abandoned. The gray is a depiction of what a 12-foot driveway would look like going into each one of these lots of record. These are 30-foot wide lots of record, so they're the smaller side even for Glen Haven. That's what that would... Conceptually, that's how those lots would be accessed if the abandonment were approved. As I said, several comments, I mean, several emails were received regarding this. Mr. Croft, part of the family of the Doris Reed Rowe, property owner across Palm, had emailed, I believe several of y'all received it originally, it was sent out again today, establishing that he was not in favor of it. The estate of Doris Rowe by Carolyn Rowe Young had also sent an email establishing they were in opposition to this abandonment. Had several other calls, but they were mostly informational, wanting to know what was going on, and as usual, wanted to find out how they could do the same. Possible actions would be to approve it, approve it with conditions, continue it to a later date for further consideration, or to not approve it, and possible motion is there for your consideration.
Paul, can you go back to the picture of the rock driveway?
Oh, yes, sir.
If this street were to go through, is there not a house on the other side of those, the bamboo?
The house is...
You're not showing it there.
The house sits over here. If the street continued on through, the house sits, and it appears to be very close to that right-of-way. I would expect it's actually in the setbacks. Wouldn't be... I would guess it's not conforming, but if you push the street through, it'd be very close to that house at the other end. Yes, sir.
Has that road ever been used as a road?
I don't have any records of the county having approved it. This is, I mean, it's improved partially for access by the adjacent property owners, but that's not a... County doesn't see that as open for public. It's used as a driveway.
Paul, can you pinpoint the object, where the property owners that objected or voiced opposition to, where they're located?
Absolutely. There's several parcels that the family owns. The one that's the point of objection is a block of lots of record in this area, two of those being directly across the unopened right-of-way from where the abandonment would occur. They also own another four this way, all in one taxed parcel. There's also, the family members also own property here, I believe in this corner.
Their concern, Paul, is access to those lots?
Their concern is that the... Yes, sir. Is that the, by the board taking action to abandon part of this right-of-way, that their lots would be, value would be diminished because of the limited access. When we had looked at this originally, the request went out for information regarding this whole right-of-way, and that would have had these parcels have to be accessed another way. There was a whole chunk of parcels that were not able to be accessed if abandonment of that whole, of Palm Street and that whole block was done. So it was requested to reduce the abandonment request down to just that area behind the applicant's house.
So who reduced it? Did the staff talk to them, or did they reduce it on the applicants?
Staff talked to Commissioner Rafalski, who said to move forward and just work on that area behind the house.
Okay. Now, are there other requests further down where those other lots are?
Where is this?
Not in the triangle area, but going the other way, on the other side of the abandonment request. Yeah, right in there?
There was no...
No, going the other way, on the same side.
Over here?
Yeah. Are there any other requests or interests?
At this point, no. The property owner in the yellow house there spoke to, I spoke to him, and he seemed interested in looking at that as a possibility for him. I believe it was the property owner at this corner who was also interested, but nothing has been submitted officially.
So doing this may create more of an issue somewhat for those property owners up there, where had we abandoned the whole thing, they would not have had access, correct?
These properties currently have access out to paved road. They don't, they, this property accesses via driveway through there.
No, I'm talking about the other ones that was closer to the abandonment area that you were talking about.
Yes, sir. If we had pursued the full right-of-way abandonment in this block, would have had to have been replatted and directed as to how access would be so that it's not to create those landlocked parcels.
All right. Okay, Commissioners, this is a public hearing. Any other discussion before we enter into the public hearing? All right, being a public hearing, if there's anyone that wishes to speak in opposition of AB 5006, please come forward and state your name for the record, speaking in opposition.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Stephen Croft. I'd like to ask staff to point out after I speak lots five through 10 in Block 20, and where they, in relation, where they are in relation to this proposed abandonment. You will see the only possible access to these lots, five through 10, is this unopened portion of Palm Street. I would also like to hand a statement from my mother, Carolyn Rowe Young, opposing this abandonment to the Commissioners. She is indisposed due to her recent hospital stay and can't be here. And this is from her. When I talked to Mr. Andrews in his office at the Pate Building, and I do thank him for talking with us... talking with me, he told me this action would render lots nine and 10 as non-building lots, but that he would combine, we could combine lots nine and 10 with Lot 8 to get ingress, egress. I told Mr. Andrews we did not want to combine any lots. These are lots of record. My grandparents moved here in 1943, and my family has held and paid taxes on these lots for 80 years. Prior to 1957, the area Ms. Corbett is seeking to be abandoned was a pit in the ground. Prior to the 1950s, Palm Street along lots five through 10 was a borrow pit used to fill Frederica Road. My grandfather used pumps to drain the pit. My mother remembers listening to them run when she was young. In 1957, my grandfather paid seaborne construction to fill in the pit and, and restore the street. Now my grandparents are deceased, and my mother wants to sell lots five through 10, but to get full value, she needs this section of Palm, a platted right-of-way to be intact and available. Builders want to build a house on each lot in this area. They make the most profit this way. About seven years ago, I sold four lots on Palmetto Street and Block 20. The builder, Commissioner Neal, did not combine any of those lots before building. He built a house on each lot. These are some of the most affordable houses, whether to buy or rent, on St. Simon's, enabling anyone, of course, but in particular, young families and people who work in the island service industry to live on the island. Even if tonight, staff can assure us, building permits can be issued to lots nine and 10 with half a street in front of them, that becomes a public safety issue. Even if with a drainage easement, maybe Ms. Corbett or a subsequent owner can't build a fence, that's a question for Mr. Mumford, they should be able to put a swing set there, or a grill, or a border of potted plants to prevent motorists from using the yard as a street, et cetera. When I was patrolling the streets of Kabul with the Afghan Army in 2009, we, the US Army, encountered things built into the street, particularly in Kabul's shanty neighborhoods. If it was mission critical for us to push through in armored Humvees and MRAPs with mounted 50-caliber rifles, we could. Yes, this was a serious public safety risk. In Glen Haven, we don't need emergency services having to make such a decision. We don't need roads to be any narrower than what is platted for Glen Haven. My mother was beaten to the ground with a cane by a neighbor and needed emergency medical services. Three police cars came here to Block 20 very quickly. We don't need half a street in, on any right-of-way in Glen Haven. Everyone orders online now for delivery. UPS and FedEx trucks are in this in all our neighborhoods constantly. We don't need them having to back up. A friend on the island had a laptop delivered to a residence on a street off of Riverview Drive that dead ends. The UPS driver backed out. He struck a child and he killed the child. My friend sent the laptop back, not wanting it now. Putting aside my mother's certain interest in lots nine and 10, I'm advised by an attorney that taking, the taking of the right-of-way could be under the takings clause of the Fifth Amendment, US, the taking of an expected interest. What little tax revenue could, would come from granting this abandonment is dwarfed by the tax revenue the county will receive from six new houses on lots five through 10, Block 20, Glen Haven. Once these lots are sold, this road will serve a useful public function. Please help my family preserve an asset it is preparing to capitalize on. Please vote against this abandonment request. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else that would speak in opposition, please state your name for the record, please.
My name is Hugh Bork. I'm a resident of the island. I'm also one of the owners of property within 200 feet of the subject abandonment. I'm also speaking against this for a couple of reasons. Number one, if you just look at the administration of this, the application, two items of, I believe the application itself is deficient. Describe in detail the nature of the request and the location of the property, the written response by the applicant, property adjoining the backyard of 410 Pine Street, and that's it. No reason, no nothing, just property's there. Second item says, what is the present, I'm sorry, what is the public use or future use of the property? The property is not currently in use. So the questions on the application were not completely answered, yet it was put forth by the Community Development Department as a valid application to move forward. All due respect, Mr. Raffolsky, we need to have a complete application regardless of what the direction is. Secondly, there's six lots, I believe, adjacent to my neighbor's objection, with a total of 14 lots of record that front on the north side of the right-of-way that could be impacted. Only two of those have residences on them. The picture that Mr. Andrews presented to you that was a gravel driveway, part of that driveway is in fact on the right-of-way of Palm Drive. So there's two residences, I don't have a pointer here, but if you move east along the right-of-way at the corner of Fourth Street, there's two residences there. They actually use the Palm Drive right-of-way for access to their homes. Yes, it's gravel. I don't know who did the development. More than likely, it was the homeowners. I looked to purchase that property several years back as part of my investment portfolio and elected not to because one of those homes, there's one home on two lots, which fine, is okay. However, one of those homes, had it, had I purchased it and continued to go with the plan of building two residences there, the second residence down there would not have had access to, to its home, other than the right-of-way of Palm Drive. So that is not driveways that was represented to you. And by the way, these are 40-foot lots, not 30-foot lots. There's two 30-foot lots down there, but the other ones are 40. Okay? I'm concerned about the property value, right? While there's a number of things that are going on in Glen Haven, and the property values are going up, so goes the, the net value of the property. And oh, by the way, guys, thanks for my tax cut in Glen Haven. I've taken it up with CapFendig, but I've, for the quote-unquote "tax rate cut," all four of my investment properties, the taxes went up. So, not sure what that benefit is, all right? So anything that happens that in fact impacts the value of these properties, okay, is also going to impact the tax revenue that goes along with it. There's 14 lots along that right-of-way, only two of which have dwellings on it, and as we've already indicated from Mr. Andrews, there is other interest. If you go look at the abandements that have already taken place and approved by this body, granted, not everybody sitting here was there, but the abandonment out on East Beach has begot a number of requests for similar abandonments. Whole different set of scenarios, but when you do this, if you approve this one, you set a precedence, and a number of folks are going to be asking for that. And the discussion that we just had on further lots not having access is going to probably increase affecting property values through there. Now, that end of Palm Street and all the other pieces that, properties down there are pretty fragile when it comes to flooding. If you go, just take a look at the topography down there, clearly it flows back to the marsh, which, and this picture is to the left or to the west in that, that area. So at some point in time, when the county sees fit to try to improve the drainage in that area, which we've been asking for, for some time, right? Palm Street is a potential solution, potential solution for that. You just approved development, if you go down south of that location, on the Kokena Drive, I believe was a, was a item that was brought up here for the Sea Island employee housing. All that drainage and whatever comes together just west of where this is before it goes into the marsh. So if you, if you encumber that from the drainage, and I, granted, you're going to keep an easement out there, but this, I think, believe is going to encumber that easement, particularly if folks choose to go ahead and do development, which is within their rights. Yep, they got to leave the access, but you've seen what's happened elsewhere around the county is, oh, please forgive me, I didn't know, right? I know you guys have taken a different stand on it, but it's setting a dangerous precedence that closed this right-of-way in this area with 14 lots impacted and a value of properties. So I implore you to vote no on this particular application. And by the way, we ought to be tightening up the reins on what the governance is for applications, and they should be complete before they're considered by the staff or by this board.
Thank you, Ms. Bork. Anyone else to come up and speak in opposition?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Julian Smith. I want to thank Mr. Croft and Mr. Bork for their statements. Mr. Bork called attention to the incomplete application. I had marked several items, all other items on the application that are not helpful. And I have been complaining for some years now that county staff frequently do not help applicants complete an application in such a way that it will pass muster by intelligent commissioners. I was at a meeting of the IPC on a Tuesday night when a woman was almost in tears because she had not expected all kinds of rough questions from the Island Planning Commission and objections from me to an application that should not have been accepted in the form it was accepted in. You will be getting that in a, in a few weeks or next month. Let's take a, a look at the last item on the application. What is the benefit to public in abandoning the right-of-way? And the applicant says, county longer, no longer responsible for upkeep and liability. Well, the county has had no responsibility of upkeep. It has not kept it up. If people who own property along there want access, they have, they've been doing it themselves or would have to do it themselves. Now, a family that has owned this property for 80 years has kept some of those lots out of development. The applicant says that there'd be a benefit to the county by making that little bitty section of right-of-way attaching it to a private property, and the taxes would go up. Well, there would be more tax benefit, but if the other, if those empty lots are abandoned, I'm sorry, are built on, there's going to be even more tax revenue. So I absolutely do not understand why staff has recommended you approve this application. There are several other things I could talk about, but this is so tiresome. Mr. Bork called attention to the recent site plan approval by the IPC for an 84-unit building in a wetland in the middle of Kokena Circle. And at the meeting on Tuesday night, there was no clear indication where the drainage that now crosses Kokena Place, Kokena Circle, will be diverted to. I wonder if that right-of-way that you want to give away is one of those places where there might be some drainage? I don't know. You don't know. Please turn this down. Turn it down. Thank you.
Anyone else that would speak in opposition to AB 5006? Anyone else to speak in opposition? Seeing none, hearing none, we'll close that portion of the hearing. And anyone that wishes to speak in favor of AB 5006, please come forward and state your name for the record.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I'm Donna Corbett. I'm the applicant for this piece of property that I'm asking to be abandoned to me. And I'd just like to speak, I guess, maybe kind of on a different situation that has occurred with that piece of land. Someone mentioned there was no expense to the county for maintaining that property, but the challenge that I've had for several years now, and how I even came to learn that the county owns that piece of property, is that the property owner, some number of years ago, planted a bamboo fence around the entire portion, mostly that's marked on this property map up here, and they don't maintain that bamboo. So I think a couple of the commissioners have seen it, and then the county, several people from the county. The bamboo, by them not maintaining it, actually caused damage and destruction to much of my property. It pushed a fence over in my yard that I'm now going to have to completely replace. When you saw the picture of the back of my house, there is no fence there where there was. It actually caused mold and mildew continually to grow on the back of my house, roof damage. Over the course of the last several years, I've worked rather diligently and quite unsuccessfully with the property owners, trying to encourage them to simply maintain that bamboo or get rid of it so that it would not continue to damage my property, to no avail. You know, on many occasions at my own expense, I had someone come out and trim the bamboo that was growing over my property. Every time, there's a battle with the property owner, Carolyn, and to some degree, her son, you know, going through verbal abuse really, when you try to get that done, to both myself as well as the people who are in doing the work, on just about every occasion, even when I've hired someone to come in and do what I'm allowed to do. The county, various county departments get called and have to come out by the property owners. The police gets called. I just, I really, you know, I kind of was at my wits' end. So once I learned that the county actually owned the property and not these property owners, I started working and trying to get that property maintained by the county, which is where this whole thing really started. The county was, eventually did come out and at their expense dug up the bamboo that is, you know, some of it that was approaching my property or overgrown on my property. And now, I'd like to be able to maintain that little bitty strip so that it doesn't happen again, so that I don't continue forever to have my property being destroyed and damaged. I simply want to maintain that little section in a way that will, you know, really just protect my property. So I understand if there are situations that the county needs that back, or needs it for drainage, or, you know, if there are special stipulations that I don't need to do, whatever I don't need to do to it, I'm perfectly willing to do that. I'd just like to be able to maintain it in a way that allows me to protect my personal property.
All right. Thank you. Is there anyone else that would speak in favor of AB 5006? State your name for the record, please.
My name is Stephanie Schleicher. I reside at 409 Pine Street. I'm a neighbor of Donna's across the street diagonally. I'm here just really to attest to her frustration over the number of years of trying to deal with the, not just the, the neighborhood property owner, but also with the issues with her house. It's, it's cost money, and we've tried to assist, but there's, there's just no way to maintain that bamboo that is completely taken over the woods. And if you say that people can egress from Palm Street, there's no way unless they could remove that bamboo. There's, there's no access to the Palm Street from that side. It's just all woods and bamboo. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that would speak in favor of AB 5006? Please come forward and state your name.
Hi, I'm Steve Stahl, brother-in-law of the applicant. And I just, again, like Stephanie said previously, I'm attesting to the issues that she's had trying to maintain that line of her property, the edge of her property. I've experienced also, you know, having the police call on me when I'm back there just trying to clear weeds and clear bamboo. So it has been an ongoing problem for the years that she's lived there, and we're just trying to hopefully be able to protect her property like Donna said. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else to speak in favor of AB 5006? Last call. Anyone else to speak in favor, AB 5006? Hearing none, seeing none, the public hearing is closed. I would like to state for the record that it was stated that I owned lots there. Did not. I was the contractor of record for the person that owned the lots, just for clarification. I was the contractor of record for the person that owned the lots, just for clarification. Commissioners, it's back to you.
Mr. Chairman, I am the one that told Ms. Corbett to look at abandonment. I thought it was an alley. I didn't realize it was a street. But when I went to look at her property, the bamboo was, was over the height of her roof. The back of her house was actually mold and she had rot in the siding because it couldn't get any sun or any air to it. So Dave Austin and we, the county cleaned that bamboo out. And all she's really asking for now is that we just protect where it doesn't get overgrown again. She, she'll maintain it and I think she's good with, if, if we take this action and let her hold the property, if the county needs it, you know, should we go ahead and put a road through there?
Yes.
I think that's what they're asking for.
Yes.
Are you, are you ready for that, sir? Are you ready to have a road put through?
My...
Because, because the bamboo's going to come out when the road goes in.
Right. Yes, sir. My grandmother was saying is, with all this here, I don't know the date that my mother can transfer the property, but it will be soon.
Could you ask me to come up with a microphone?
I, I think, I think it's over, Puddy. But anyway, that's, that's the reason this was brought to the board. I just want that known. It's, it's not, I didn't know Ms. Corbett before I was elected. I went down there and I saw the situation. Commissioner Tostens saw it at the same time. You know, if, if you can't protect your house from something like, like a neighbor with an invasive species, you know, where are we at?
Commissioners? Any other discussion on the matter?
Ms. Corbett, if, if we grant this and there's, we decide to put a road in, you're okay with that?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Attorney?
Commissioners, if you grant this abandonment and approve it, then you will not be able to put a road on that portion.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
The, the abandonment would preclude you all from putting a road on the abandoned area, just to be clear on that.
Okay. Commissioner Fendig, you have something to say? Commissioner, are you online?
Yes, sir. I have a long history with this street and this property from my previous term. The neighbors, first of all, have been obnoxious to one another down there. And so, I am, can you hear me?
We can hear you. We could hear you. We're not hearing you now.
Can you hear me, Mr. Chairman?
I can hear you now.
Okay. The sound through the team's meeting here is really poor. Anyway, it's been a problem. While Commissioner Rafowski and I have been out there several times with the issue, you know, just been unreconcilable between the neighbors and the issue back in there. It's a dead-end road. Nobody's using it except the owner across the street cuts in there to get to their house. This is the backyard of the lady. So we were looking for some remedy. And I understand the roads and the other properties that desire to be accessible. So I don't have any problem making a commitment from the county to go ahead and settle this issue by put paving a road or clearing the road, not paving it, paving the road all the way through. The roads are very protective of their privacy and there's been a lot of, a lot of issues on that and I respect that. But I think that if, if we're going to remedy the issues here, which is what the lady is looking for, the best is to go ahead and the county to commit to open that road all the way through. And the roads will lose their privacy that they've enjoyed in the extra land for a long time. We'll take out all that bamboo and all the woods and clear that road out as a 20-foot road through there.
All right. Any other discussion on this matter? All right. Commissioners, do I have a recommendation?
Mr. Attorney? Would we be able to clear that right-of-way before we pave it? Just clear it right now and leave it open so it can become a street unpaved and then put it on Elmeg or something?
Yes, sir.
So we can go ahead and clear it if, if we deny this abandonment?
Correct.
Thank you.
All right, gentlemen. I'm waiting on a motion.
So this is a, this won't be one of the staff recommendations since we are just kind of looking at. I would recommend that we clear it in preparation of a future pavement if Ms. Corbett is, is good with that for now, to keep, to make sure that the bamboo and, because that bamboo can grow anywhere and, and tall and very invasive of anything. So that's my motion, that we go ahead and clear it for road, for road preparation.
But you're denying abandonment?
Denying the abandonment, but committing to us doing road preparation and clearing it out.
I'm forming a motion.
As best as I can make it.
So I have a motion by Commissioner Booker to deny the abandonment, but proceed to clear the road right-of-way along that section of Palm Street.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Booker, a second by Commissioner Clark. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion as it's presented, please raise your right hand. Commissioner Fendig?
Yes, sir. Aye.
All right. That is six, four. Those opposed? One. Two. I'm sorry, I didn't see you. So that is five in favor of the motion by Commissioner Booker, two opposed.
Thank you.
And that, that includes a commitment to open that road up, correct, Mr. Chairman?
That includes a commitment to clear that road right-of-way from fourth to fifth.
Well, that'll, that'll take care of the problems we're having with the neighbors and with the bamboo. Thank you.
All right. Item number six. There's a public hearing for land use. This is ZM 5319, 7156 Highway 99 Plan Development District Amendment. Consideration of an amendment to the Golden Isles Gateway Exit 42 Parcel Plan Development District, case number ZM 2824, to expand, excuse me, permitted uses of 7156 Highway 99, parcel 03-12108. Jake Hightower, Robert Civil Engineer, agent for Mark McDonald, Brunswick Highway 99 LLC owner. You're not, Ms. Leaf.
No, I am not.
Hey, Maurice.
Maurice Postal.
Introduce yourself to us, please.
Maurice Postal, Glen County Community Development. The applicant for this project is requesting to amend the current Golden Isles Gateway Exit 42 PD to expand permitted uses on this one parcel. This rezoning does not affect the Buc-E's parcel or the remaining three parcels that are within the boundaries of the original PD. The PD text currently allows general commercial, highway commercial, and freeway commercial uses and various residential uses within parcel P1 of the PD, parcel P3, the southern portion of the PD is reserved for single-family attached and detached housing. The applicant is requesting to eliminate the distinction between parcel P1 and parcel P3 in the PD text, and again, it's only on this one parcel. In addition, the applicant is requesting that RV parks be added as a permitted use on the parcel and the maximum density would be 15 units per acre, which is in line with the density for RV parks and HC and FC zoning. This parcel has been in some form of commercial zoning since at least 1994 with the first Golden Isles Gateway PD, and then the revised PD in 99 remained in commercial zoning. Under both of the Golden Isles Gateway PDs, the parcel had freeway commercial uses. And the current Exit 42 PD in which this parcel is located was approved back in 2014. This is a zoning map showing the parcel within the black line. This is Buc-E's to the northeast of the parcel. Smith Seafood is to the east and there are three vacant parcels that are also within the same PD that are adjoining this parcel. This is the master plan for the original PD showing the P1 section, which is commercial and residential, and P3, which is only residential. And this parcel is basically this area to the east of the access easement and the high and dry land in parcel P3. This is a survey showing that. This, again, this is Buc-E's, this is Smith Seafood, and this is the parcel, this weird-looking shape here. There have been numerous, a few RV park projects approved by the county within the past two years with some different levels of development approval. Of course, the adjoining Smith Seafood property was approved for rezoning recently with up to 500 RV spaces. There's the fancy bluff PD down near Exit 29 that could potentially have up to 616 RV spaces. There's a one-road RV resort behind the Boondocks Bar on Blith Island Highway that's up to 125. And Southern Retreats Phases II and III could be up to 380 RV spaces. And during the Mainland Planning Commission meeting back on January 10th, Mr. Hightower stated that a prospective developer could potentially have plans for this site for an up to 1,000-space RV park. As far as site plan approval, as stated on page nine of the PD text, an RV park on this property would still require site plan approval from the Planning Commission, as is typical in the county's highway commercial and freeway commercial districts. And since RV park is not currently permitted use on this site, this would have to occur if this rezoning is approved. The applicant did submit some revised language in the PD text today. The original language in Section 1L of the PD text stated, "In the event of a conflict, a hierarchy of documents shall be this document," and then the Glen County zoning ordinance and subdivision regs that are in effect as of June 5th, 2014, which was the original date of approval for the Exit 42 PD. And that's been revised to state that in the event of a higher, conflict between the PD text and Glen County regulations, those would be the regulations in effect as of December 20th, 2022, which is when this application was submitted. The Mainland Planning Commission did vote unanimously for this project, did recommend that the board of commissioners approve the project, and these are your possible actions
All right. Thank you, Mr. Postal. Commissioners, any comments before we open the public hearing?
One question, Mr. Chairman. The road into Buc-E's, would it be the same road that would be going into this development?
No, I believe the road that goes through Buc-E's is for Buc-E's and then a planned strip mall development to, adjoining to it. This project would have a separate road onto Highway 99.
Can you show us that?
Well, this is the Buc-E's parcel right here. This area.
Is there anywhere a road enters to go to Buc-E's?
It's approximately right here.
Okay. And where's the road that would enter to go to the RV park?
It would be somewhere in this area.
No. No, isn't it above that, Maurice?
Okay.
Oh, oh. Right there?
Right.
Yes. I mean, that's, that's what I have seen from past.
Sure. Mr. Hightower does have a conceptual site plan that he's going to show tonight, so that would show where the location of the road is.
All right. Thank you. Commissioners, anything else before we open the public hearing? All right. This is a public hearing for ZM 5319. Anyone that wishes to come forward and speak in opposition, please come forward and state your name for the record, please.
Okay. So a few weeks ago, a few months ago, the county approved a 500-space RV park on the other side of the canal from this parcel. We have lots of RV parks, spaces already, and now up to 1,000. Is this what Glen County really wants to be known as, RV Park Heaven? Or are we going to provide RV parks as shabby housing for all the people who have been foreclosed on because of the bad loans that have been given in this county when, when interest was cheap and it is no longer? You're probably going to approve this, but I'd like you to consider how bad the situation is here in Glen County, where we have all of these toxic plan development texts without any sunset clause. In other communities, well-run communities, thoughtful communities, if somebody comes in with a wildlife park scheme or some other kind of scheme like that meant to drag in tourists off the interstate, then the board or the commission or the council would say, "Well, you're going to have to do this, show some progress, break ground within a few years, X number of years, or this goes away." But we can't sunset this. So there's this constant process in Glen County of modifying, amending these old texts. That does not make any particularly good sense. And by the way, what is going to happen to the large parcel, probably 75 acres or so, on the west side? There's a narrow access between the parcel on the east side, the land on the east side and the land on the west side. It can't have any access from the interstate itself. So what's going on there? Is that lake that you see on the map in the middle, right next to the highway, is that going to be filled in so there can be a road going to the west to access more land? What is the impact going to be on the two, on the nearby subdivision on the west side? And so on and so on. I think you've got to ask some questions, gentlemen.
Good evening. I'm Susan Inman, Coastal Advocate for 100 Miles. We're a nonprofit organization that works to protect the coast through education, advocacy, and civic engagement. Tonight, the applicant is requesting the RV parks be added as permitted use in the PD. A concern is the lack of information on the wetlands on this property. Throughout our Georgia coast, it is known that the east side of I-95 is concentrated with wetlands, concentrated with wetlands. This holds true for these 267 acres that are home to extensive wetlands. An old map dated in 2003, which I handed to you all, shows that this area was slated to be a mitigation bank for wetlands because of the huge potential for these natural features to continue to serve this area with flood mitigation and storm control. I also included another wetland map that is more recent, 2021, from a private developer that was marketing this area for housing. So with these two maps, you can now see clearlyly a small history of this property and the number of, and the number of wetlands that we are dealing with on this property. As we know, the Corps of Engineers are the ones that rule on wetlands, but U.S. commissioners need to know the whole picture before you cast your vote on properties for development. Another concern is that you're missing the state mandatory development of regional impact study, also known as DRIs, which should have been applied for when this was brought to the county staff due to the size of the project. This study will give you information on the water supply, traffic counts... water supply, traffic counts, waste disposal, storm water management, wastewater disposal, impacts of wetlands, and so on. The rules of Georgia Department of Community Affairs, Chapter 110-12-3-01, Number 2, states, "When a local government proposes a project that may meet or exceed the DRI thresholds, the local government becomes applicant and must submit the project to the Coastal Regional Commission, Coastal Commission, excuse me, as a potential DRI." Further in this chapter, Number 4, states, "The host's local government may proceed with its development review process during the DRI process, provided that it does not take final action, a final official action approving a project until the DRI process is completed." As a reminder, this parcel is 267 acres, which will be given a maximum density of 15 units per acre if approved. These numbers exceed the DRI threshold. In closing, the proposed permitted use will bring high density, high traffic, and large stormwater runoff to this area. Please deny this request tonight due to not having enough information, or at minimum defer your vote until there is a completed DRI for review. Thank you for your time and service tonight.
Anyone else that would come up and speak in opposition?
Good evening, Commissioners. Good evening, Chief.
State your name for the record.
My name is Josiah Watts. I am a Commissioner on the Gulliguchi Heritage Corridor Commission. I mean, I also work with Ms. Inman. And I just want to say a few things about this project in its entirety and itself. I think the first thing that stood out to me is that, you know, the site plan, right? I heard him say that he would be working on one this evening, but, you know, if there's a site plan, if there's no site plan, it should not be in front of you right now. It should go back to the Mainland Planning Commission, where there should be a site plan that you should see what you're approving. I mean, without the site plans, you don't exactly know exactly what you're approving. The other thing I thought about was the capacity. When we're talking about 15 units per acre, we're talking about, you know, up to almost 4,000 units. I mean, that's what we're talking about, those kind of numbers. I'm not saying those are the numbers that they would do, but that's what we may be talking about, and you don't know that because there's not a site plan. And then I thought about the history of this canal, the Altima Hall Canal that runs down the middle in itself. And I took this from an article that was written in 2018 from the Brunswick News. This canal was dug and built by enslaved Africans and also Irish immigrants. And the article said this, "By all accounts, labor was an issue throughout. The brunt of the work originally relegated to the enslaved blacks from local plantations. Unskilled Irish immigrants were then brought in and finished the project. The plantation owners who backed the project preferred risking Irish immigrant lives and the hazardous labor of canal construction. It was strictly business." So I think about the history that also is in that space. And have we really thought about that and how, you know, we can acknowledge that before we do a project of this type that will have that much impact on that space that does not have a site plan? So I would just ask that the, you know, Commission, you know, really, really think about this when we're, you know, approving these projects that don't have the specific requirements that they're supposed to have. And the last thing that I'll say is that, at our office, I was looking at something called the Brunswick-Altima Hall Canal Study that was done in 1981, right here for Glen County, by the Maritime Preservation Division of the National Historic Trust. And there were all these amazing things about the history of that canal, the history of that space. It talked about an outdoor museum, a marshdite for a nature walk, plantation, prehistoric artifacts, historic sites. All of that history, that's right there, and could be impacted by this project that, again, you know, that we don't really have a specific site plan about exactly what they're going to do there, because they can say what they're going to do, but until you see it, until you have this, you know, image of it to be approved, you're kind of going on what they say may or may not be there. So I would just ask this Commission to just really, you know, think about this further, and to deny this application, or at least at minimum defer and send it back to the Mainland Planning Commission. All right. Thank you.
Anyone else that would speak? Anyone else that would speak in opposition? State your name for the record, please.
My name is Stu Graham. I'm a resident of Heritage Estates, which is a neighborhood directly across from Highway 99, and that from an area that was recently rezoned commercial based on development of a 500-slot RV park. The RV park was presented as neighborhood-friendly with minimal impact on the residential housing and the neighborhood. It appears that zoning changes to commercial, from agricultural, residential, or whatever, may be approved by this Commission based on the friendly development of an RV park. I'm concerned about the viability of such a development and the effects that this may have. I suggest, no, I implore this Commission and future Commissioners to make it a policy that should properties in question not be developed on site plan as proposed when the zoning is proposed, such as an RV park, or significant progress has not been reached within a specified period of time, five, 10 years. That zoning should revert to original agriculture or residential zoning. It is important that zoning regulations not be abused by developers. Pay no attention to the man behind the screen. They cannot be permitted to offer something different than was originally proposed before this Commission. I'm now zoned commercial. I can do anything I want. That is not proper operation, and it should not be approved by this Commission or this county. Thank you.
Anyone else that would come and speak in opposition of ZM 5319? Anyone else to speak in opposition? Seeing none, hearing none, we'll close that portion. Those that wish to speak in favor of ZM 5319, please come forward and state your name
Thank you, Commissioner, and good evening. My name's Danny Wall. Brief history on this project. My partners and I, we took title of the entire 302 acres last March 30th, and we successfully conveyed the approximate 34 acres to Bucky's on May 10 of '22. And we feel like that the community is tremendously blessed with our development with Bucky's. There was an exhaustive site selection process that we considered counties to the north, counties to the south. The entire community should be just really, really thrilled about what we're doing relative to tax base, jobs, et cetera. And relative to the proximity of Interstate 95, based on the history of the property, clearly, an RV use in Bucky's is the highest and best use. And the RVs, as Jake will state briefly, is very, very important to Bucky's, is part of their business model. And again, we're thrilled to be here, and we appreciate your support. Thank you.
State your name for the record, please.
Good evening, Commissioners. Jake Hightower with Robert Civil Engineering. Thank you for your time tonight, and I'm the agent for this project. I'm asking that y'all could approve this project as presented, and we're also available to answer any questions after the public comment period as well. As Mr. Danny was stating, that this is a site that is, in essence, a good fit to kind of go along with the future planned development of this Bucky's site. And so what I'd like to do is I'd kind of like to walk through some of the comments that were stated before, see if I can answer any questions. And then also, last Tuesday night during the MPC, I was able to show what the site is planned to look like. But before I do that, I do want to address that there were some comments about how we're not abiding by ordinances. We're going by Section 723 of the Glen County ordinances for plan developments. We're not asking to approve something that you don't know what's going to be there. We're asking that you approve specific uses that are spelled out within the PD text. Yes, the purpose of the PD text is to give a little flexibility in case market conditions change, but what this text is, what we're doing now tonight is we're taking the existing uses that are already approved, and since the site has changed in terms of the shape of the parcel, all we are asking is that, as opposed to having this delineation line to say commercial in the front and only residential in the back, all we're asking is that we take the same uses and apply it to the parcel across. And the reason being is that, as you see, this has been carved out to where it's a very narrow shape. And one other point is that this parcel, as been stated tonight, is right along I-95. And so, you know, I was a part of the Smith rezoning here for this RV park. I still think that's a good use for that piece of property. And this is also a very good use because it is right along that corridor where folks can come in, use amenities of Bucky's, and then also use this as a stopping point for the RV park. And I've said it in the past with the 100 Miles folks, is that what better way to showcase the Golden Isles than to have a spot for people to come in, park, and explore the rest of what everything has to offer all along the coast? What I do have is a conceptual plan that we've put together, and just a little history on this project. We've been working on this since June of 2022. When we first came here, we said, okay, this is the existing plan development. Can we do commercial in the front, and commercial in the front with RVs, and then can we look at doing single-family residential in the back? We tried to lay it out, and the narrow nature of the project, we could not make single-family houses or townhomes work. We tried, but it is a very difficult site to work with. So what we did is we just figured out, we just figured what can be the kind of best use for the property. And so, a couple of things is that this is the conceptual plan that we presented at the MPC. It hasn't changed since then. And what you can see here is it is a plan for a large-scale RV park with a very good use of an amenity center. The question was posed as to the access. So there is, the plans right now along Highway 99 is that there are going to be three, excuse me, there's plans for three curb cuts along this area, and one is going to be right in, right out into the Bucky's site, which you saw in their site plan. This is going to be the major intersection for Bucky's use, as well as an access easement for this parcel back here as well. And so that is what the plan is, is to use this main access, main thoroughfare to access the site. You can see here, this will be a, I can zoom down, it kind of zooms into each section. But what we're doing here is we're basically trying to find the upland areas, because you can see here, these are the wetlands that have been preliminarily delineated. What we do typically is we'll have a environmental consultant come out and do a preliminary investigation to try to map out where the wetlands are, and that gets us a starting point. But then when we go back through and do a full delineation, that is the jurisdiction of the Army Corps of Engineers. We get that surveyed. We turn our permits, just like any of our development along the coast. So there has been that initial assessment done for this property. There is no plan to touch the lake. If anything, in terms of filling it in for a road, as Mr. Putty was talking about, this was used to help build up I-95 as a borrow pit. It's still a pond, and there's going to be more ponds that will abide by the Georgia Storm Water Management Manual to service the whole development. But what you can see is that this is a development that has quite a few RV spots. The PD text is asking for 15 units per acre, but as I stated in the MPC, 1,000 units is really all that we can fit on this site. And that's a combination, when we say units, this is a combination of recreational vehicle pads as well as small camping cabins, and I can show you a picture of both of those. But you can see they're planning for a very nice amenity center, all of which will come before the Planning Commission as a site plan. We'll go through the planning, the rest of the county staff as well. But this is the upland section down towards the rear, again, really all along the I-95 corridor. There's very little impact in along the canal that was discussed. Vast majority of it is wetlands, and so we'll pretty much stay out of that. But you can see that there's really not much frontage of this property that fronts the canal section right here. Additionally, here is a couple pictures that shows basically what is planned. So there was a lot of questions regarding, would it be an RV or cabin? And what it is, is how these kind of high-end RV parks work is that they will have a number of pads, and then as they cash flow and it gets profitable, they'll convert a portion of these to a freestanding building, which would still go through the Glen County zoning process, still go through the building department. And they won't turn all of it, but they turn, say, about 30% of those spots into a cabin so that those who don't have an RV, because they're pretty expensive, they can still come and enjoy this amenity center. So these are just kind of some sample elevations that they provided. And this right here is kind of what the site would look like. You can see there's large amenity centers, pools. It's a really nice development that really brings a lot of folks into the area as a good recreational facility. I believe I'm at my time, so I will end it there, but please know that I'm available for any questions if you should have any additional ones, and I can address some more points that were brought up. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that would come forward and speak in favor of ZM 5319? Just speak in favor. Seeing none, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing, and Commissioners, we're back to you.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Are there any plans to make sure that we preserve the canal area or even a historical marker of some kind to make sure it's maintained and tell the story there? And I have to apologize to the community, Jake, you can come up, because I haven't looked at this, stayed on top of this project like I should have, because I initially started out with not knowing anything about it. And I think I was the last Commissioner to know anything about exactly what was going to be here until I was briefed at a small group session. But I am concerned about how we get looked at. I'm in support of Bucky's and what they're looking at doing here, but because we've had the world looking at us over the past two or three years, if the preservation of this canal and the story behind it is not properly presented, there are folk locally and nationally that may put a not-so-good light on this project. And so instead of having it full up, you have a boycott of this area. And so that's why I'm asking this question, is that, has there been any consideration? Because initially, I got a lot of calls from African-Americans concerned about this because of where it is, and that there may be slave graveyards there, and not sure if the developers really check for that. But and so my concern is the preservation of the canal and see if there's some synergy in being able to get the project done, but putting the best light on this. If the canal is there, whether you're not really over that way, but because it's right there, it is important. It's important to the history of this community and African-American community. So to not consider that as a part of the development, I know I can't support it tonight until I find out a little bit more about what's going to happen with that.
Yes, Sir. Commissioner Booker, thank you for the opportunity to come up and speak on that question. In terms of the developers, their main focus is really the upland portions. There really is little work to be done along the canal. The canal, the intention really is to keep it pretty much the way it is. I mean, there is no, there's no intention of altering it or changing it in any way. This canal is used throughout the county in many ways to convey water for stormwater runoff, but I think it's perfectly appropriate to ask the developers to put in, say, an additional buffer off of that canal. But regardless of a buffer, let's just say that we were to put, you know, instead of a 25-foot buffer off of it, if there was something that was discovered at 50 feet off that buffer, anybody doing work within Glen County, if there is any sort of artifact found, there are strict rules that you stop all developers. found, there are strict rules that you stop all development, and they have an architect that will come in and exhume the area. And it's a pretty involved process to where they will basically stop development around that area, exhume the site, and do an intensive study before anything can be resumed and figured out what to do for the, going forward. But at this time, there really is, is no plans to try to put much development along this canal. I can say there are other developments further upland on the canal, say, for instance, Academy, Sam's Club, storage facilities that are right on top of the canal. That's not the intention of this. The intention of this development is to have a facility that will support the Buc-Ee's along the I-95 corridor. And it's, it's cost prohibitive to try to impact wetlands and try to get closer down, down towards that canal. But having said that, I think that it's very agreeable for them to say, say, an additional buffer off of that canal, which also, when we come in for a site plan, we can show that there, the exact extents of the development and how it would be in proximity. But I can tell you for a fact that, that the, the main objective is to stay up towards the I-95 corridor and to stay out of the low-lying wetland areas along the canal. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
I'd just like to say it's worth amplification that tonight we're not evaluating a site plan. The site plan would go back to the Mainland Planning Commission if tonight's action was approved. That's my understanding.
Yes, Sir, that's correct. Before anything goes forward, we'd have to go through a full site plan process.
Thank you.
My concern is that, is the traffic scenario. And it's been brought to my attention that, you know, Buc-Ee's will bring in anywhere between 850 and 1,000 vehicles a day. And then trying to use the same access for an RV park, which can house up to 1,000, just seems like that's an overburden on the traffic flow coming in from one, one entrance and one exit. And I don't know if anyone has reached out to Buc-Ee's to hear their concerns about this being utilized through the same corridor. That's a lot of vehicles. That's just, that's my concern.
Yes, Sir, that's exactly correct. It's, it's quite a few vehicles. However, the, the use from an RV park would be the same as if it was a single-family development. However, they do, they're a little more regimented in terms of they kind of come and go around weekends. And so that can be a topic of discussion in terms of the amount of vehicles. So you're, you're absolutely correct. And the highway along that corridor is the jurisdiction of GDOT for that area, and there's already extensive plans in place to expand this highway. There's another engineering firm who's working on two-part projects, one on the highway expansion and another on Buc-Ee's. And since Buc-Ee's is a owner within the, the radius of which they're given notice for these hearings, they have received a notice of this full zoning development. But we also do have conversations with GDOT because there's a lot of development in that area. It's not just this project. There is a single-family development across 95. And then there is also a potential for multifamily across the street. So all those come into consideration. And, and we do contact GDOT and let them know. And whenever we have site plans, that's part of the requirements is to contact them. And then part of the site planning process are traffic studies and all the due diligence in that regard. But there, the water and sewer traffic, it's very well-known that that's all coming to this intersection, and so that's being planned out at this time.
Mr. Hightower, would it, would it be within the realm to ask the developer to maybe put a historic placard commemorating the Autumn Hall Canal on his property somewhere that would tell of the history of it, which is, you know, intriguing to me. I used to live on that canal. That, that would give visitors some history of the canal as part of their overall site plan?
I think that's perfectly reasonable, yes, Sir. I've come out and visited these sites many times. I want to say there is a placard on the highway at the crossing of the canal. However, this is planned for recreational site where with these wetlands, you don't want to put a building through there, but you do want to put trails and of the sort. So I think it's perfectly reasonable to, to put a placard along a trail that, that goes along the, the canal. And I think that it's perfectly reasonable to work with whichever society you think is best, whether it be the National Historical Society or, or a society of that nature, to work on that wording. I think that's perfectly reasonable to put that as a request.
Thank you.
Yes, Sir.
Any other discussion? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve ZM 5319 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Foskey, a second by Commissioner Clark to approve ZM 5319. Any other discussion? Then all in favor, please raise your right hand. Commissioner Fendig?
Yes, Sir, aye.
All right, so that is five, four, those against, and then one abstention. So that does pass. Item number seven, ZM 5334, billboard use, consideration of an application to rezone a portion of parcel 02-00867 from the Forest Agricultural FA Zoning District to Freeway Commercial FC Zoning District to allow for a billboard. Eric Taylor, Cumberland Land Surveyors, agent for Philip Monson, Southern Vending Owner. Good afternoon, evening, sir.
Good evening. Christopher Carey, Community Development. Before you tonight, we have rezoning for a split-zone parcel at Zero Fancy Bluff Road. The property is 3.49 acres. And the primary use that the applicant is looking for is a billboard. Currently, there is no access to the parcel, but for the issuance of a building permit, that would have to be established. Right here are the current uses allowed in Freeway Commercial. Yes, I can. So you have amusement or entertainment facility, automobile service stations, office buildings, drinking establishments, commercial parking lots, restaurants, repair garages, hotel or motel, nine and outdoor advertising sign, public park or private commercial recreation area, vehicle and boat sales and services, as well as retail businesses and accessory uses and telecommution, telecommunications facilities. Right here is the location of the property. As you see, it is currently split-zone between FA and Freeway Commercial. So there are two nearby residences, and per ordinance, the, the structure must, or billboard must be at least 300 feet away from residential structure. The yellow line that you see going horizontal is where the current zoning ends, and that sliver between the yellow and the white is where a billboard could be placed. Right here is a survey of the property. And here are two other billboards that are within the vicinity of the property. To the north, you have 2,000 feet, and to the south, 1,500. So in total, you could have a billboard at the height of between 45 and 46 feet tall. The current grade at the parcel is between 19 and 18 feet, and the grade at roadbed for I-95 is somewhere around 30 feet. And here are your possible actions. The MPC did recommend that no development except for billboards shall be allowed under the zoning unless the owner gains access, legal access, through the freeway, commercial side of the property, and no access through the residential side. The applicant and owner are also here tonight, and that is all that I have.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, anything before we open the public hearing? This is a public hearing for ZM 5334, billboard use, consideration of an application to rezone that portion that I read earlier. Anyone in opposition to ZM 5334, please come forward and state your name for the record, please, to speak in opposition. Last call, anyone to speak in opposition of ZM 5334? Okay, we'll close that portion of the hearing. Those that wish to speak in favor of ZM 5334, please come forward and state your name for
Good evening. My name is Eric Taylor. I'm with Cumberland Land Surveyors, and I'm the agent here to represent the property owner. And I'm just here to help answer any questions y'all might have regarding the property and just anything I can help answer.
All right. If you'll step to the side just a second, and we'll see if there's anyone else that wants to speak in favor.
Good evening, Commissioner. My name is Phil Monson. I am the owner of the property that we're proposing here for the Freeway Commercial.
All right. Anything further than that to add?
No, sir. The only thing that they added was the language about getting access through Love's Truck Stop, which we're already in negotiations with, so I think that's going to be, we can do that.
All right.
Okay, thank you very much.
Anyone else that wishes to come forward and speak in favor of ZM 5334? Seeing none, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. And Commissioners, we're back to you.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask you a question of the applicant and his, his agent? In terms of, have y'all had any conversation with DOT that they don't have any heartburn with this proposal?
I've been in contact with a gentleman named Russell Kavistab with the Georgia Department of Transportation. He is the outdoor advertising coordinator for all of I-95. And based on the measurements, this came up at the last meeting, they were asking, you know, is there a possibility of overloading the property with billboards? There's only room to put one. You've got 900 feet there, as you saw from Chris's drawing, it's a pretty tiny area. So there's room to put one billboard.
Has there been any conversation, discussion about the, the way this is being zoned here? And according to our rules and regs, this is okay, but I understand that they may have some heartburn with this sole restriction on it.
The only requirement that Mr. Kavistab told me was that it has to be all Freeway Commercial, it can't be split. And that's why we're here. Before we submit our DOT application, we're trying to get the Freeway Commercial zoning.
Thank you. Commissioner, I appreciate that. I just wanted to make sure the applicant, you know, was aware that, you know, DOT may ask some questions about tonight's zoning. And again, this meets our regs, but, you know, that's up to them how they enforce their rules.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much.
I've got some questions about the height of the, of the billboard.
Yes, Sir.
I know that you, we've got a grade, but what is, what is the total height of, of this billboard would be on the interstate?
So it could be at 46 feet.
Total?
Total.
From ground to the top of the sun?
Yes, but it can't be...
Or above sea level.
So it can't be greater than 35 feet above the roadbed of I-95.
So what is the grade of the roadbed?
30 feet.
And there is no access to this property. So I, I'm confused. How, how are y'all expecting to build a billboard when you don't have access to the property?
Would you come forward to the microphone, please?
As far as getting equipment in there to, to the property itself, there's a Love's Truck Stop next door, and it's pretty easy access. Their property line runs within, I don't know, probably 10 feet of the actual property line where we can go in.
Have they granted you access?
They have not yet, no, sir.
You know, it seems like you're putting the cart before the horse here. Just seems like, you know, if you, if you had all these things in place first, then come to the commission and ask for the zoning request. But until then, I, I don't really see where you're going with this.
Well, the DOT...
And then, and Mainland Planning, from what I understand, made a recommendation that this be denied until you have access. Is that correct?
No, sir. She was referring to, if I'm correct, Chris, that if we tried to open up any other type of business, a commercial business on that property, that they would not approve it unless we had access from Love's Truck Stop or Speedco, which is actually the same property owner.
And you have to have access through commercial property, not residential?
Yes, sir. And then that side, Chris, do you have a drawing that shows this right here? You can kind of see Love's Truck Stop. Love's Truck Stop is that right curve. And then there's, they've actually put a road in since that picture was taken where the two properties are connected right across the back of my property line there, sir. And, you know, as far as DOT, DOT will not let me even, they told me they will deny the application unless it's all Freeway Commercial. That's why we haven't applied yet.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions, Commissioners?
Well, along the same lines as Commissioner Tosterson, I see you can get to the edge of your property. So is there a road to get to where you want to put the billboard? Or do you have to put one in?
Come back to the microphone, please.
To construct a billboard, they really only need, you know, the fence line. You can actually walk down the fence line from 95. And I think the setback, what is it, Eric? 50 feet where the pole would sit back from I-95? It's not like we're clearing a bunch of land out. There's just a few trees right there, and it would be between that yellow and white line against that fence line right there.
Yeah, I mean, I have the same concern. It seems like we're, we don't have everything in place for this. I mean, it seems simple enough to you all, but...
It's, it's very simple. There is...
But if something, what if something happens and you don't get the approval from Love's?
Well, then, then we will, well, if we, there's no...
But we've already approved it.
No one needs to access the property once the billboard is up. It's not like we're going to have commercial traffic running across the lot, and that was the...
So you won't be changing?
I'm sorry, sir.
So you won't be changing the, your clients on the billboard?
Well, we're, I mean, our object is to put a billboard there. Her concern with the access was if we opened up a commercial operation. She referred to me and asked me if we were going to put a commercial diesel shop in there, and I was like, absolutely not. It's not our plans. There's actually two diesel service centers right there already. And that's why she wanted that language in there about coming from the commercial side if it was ever a commercial, any type of other business.
Okay, I, I do have concerns.
Okay, thank you.
Can we go back to the survey? On this survey, I think this was done in 1982 by Herman Bacon. It shows that that track was on Freeway Commercial. At sometime between then and now, with the, the map with the red line going out, it was on split commercial. And it, it just seems that that red line is kind of an arbitrary line, how it splits the southeast joiner, you know? We can't find any, anywhere where anybody applied to rezone their properties, you know, where that split zoning came from. When they built I-95, that's what landlocked the property. It used to have access to Fancy Bluff, but with the construction of that, they didn't provide any access. So that's kind of a short history of, you know, this, this property.
But if you're not successful with the, with the billboard project that you're wanting to do, and we approve this, this rezoning, there's the whole list that Community Development listed that can go there.
Yes.
If you, if you, if your billboard gets abandoned, and there in line lies the problem that I'm having with, with this rezon, because if you're not successful in, in being able to access this property, but you get it rezoned, then it changes the whole dynamic.
Right. So now, you know, the owner's kind of at a hardship. He can't, he can't really do anything with it. So this is kind of an option to do something with the property. So that's where we're at.
It's got to go. It can't move forward. My understanding is you can't move forward with your DOT application unless the entire property is on freeway commercial. And the line between the red and the beige, or whatever that is, there's no record of when that line became, but you have to get a clarification to zone it all freeway commercial before you can move forward.
That is correct, sir.
And if you don't put a billboard there, any access you have to the property has to come through the commercial side of things, you cannot have access through residential.
That's correct. And I forgot to mention the point that Eric made, before 1980, that was all freeway commercial, according to the original surveys that were done when, it was originally a pilot truck stop, and then it became a Love's Truck Stop. So at one point, he's got several surveys that show it as being freeway commercial, and then all of a sudden, it became half and half. So we're not quite sure how that happened, but we're just trying to get clarification and get this thing commercial.
All right. Commissioners, any other questions?
Thank you for your time.
Can I get a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we deny this proposed zoning decision.
Have a motion by Commissioner Tosterson to deny.
Second.
A second by Commissioner Booker to deny the proposal. All in favor of denying, please raise your right hand. That's four against, those against the denial, please raise your right hand. Commissioner Fendig?
Yes, sir, I abstain on this.
So we have an abstention, so we have a motion to deny by Commissioner Tosterson, a second by Commissioner Booker, and that vote count was what, to deny? Five to deny, one in favor or against the denial, and then one abstention, so that does not pass. Item number eight, consider approving a reimbursement of the $1,000 site plan application fee for Marshes of Glen Baptist Church for the site plan approval application, case number SP 5270, for in addition to the church allocated 3780 Highway 82, parcel 0313597. Ms. Leaf, there you are.
I'm here now. Good evening, Commissioner Stephanie Leaf, Community Development Department. This is a request from Marshes of Glen Baptist Church on Highway 82. They had applied for a site plan approval application to do in addition to their church. We do require $1,000 application fee. That is a fee schedule that's adopted by the county, so that is something that we have to have in order to process an application. However, if an applicant would like to request a reimbursement or waiver of the fee, they can come before the board to make that request. So Marshes of Glen is making that request to have their $1,000 fee reimbursed to them, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
So this is not something that can be done by the county manager?
That is correct. We, these don't come around very often, there was one a few years ago that we handled the same way, it did come before the board, because it is a schedule of fees that's adopted by the board, so any changes to that comes before the board.
This is in my district, I feel that I sponsored this for the church. The church has been a voting precinct, so it has been helpful to the county, it's also hosted town hall meetings, and, and since it had been done in the, in the past, then I wanted to sponsor this. With commission approval.
Any other questions? Entertainer motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would make the emotion that we approve the fee reimbursement.
Have a motion by Commissioner Tosterson, a second by Commissioner Swett. Any other discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. Commissioner Fendig?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, everybody loves the church, and I agree with all the benefits that Sammy's talked about, but I can't support this because it's a gratuity. I really just like the attorney to verify that we can, can do that, but there are so many nonprofits and other developments that occur that would like to waive these fees, and I'm not certainly against the church, but I think it's a gratuity and, and has to be consistent. So I'm, I'm voting against that.
All right.
But I'd like the attorney just to weigh in.
Commissioners, normally we would not recommend entertaining this kind of waiver, however, because they are a precinct, because they do host us at, at no cost, to my, my knowledge, we do get a benefit from them for this. So essentially, we are, we are exchanging that for the other services rendered.
All right, so we have in favor five, one opposed, and one abstention by Commissioner Clark, so it, it passes. Item number nine, consider appointing citizens to serve on the 2023 Comprehensive Plan Stakeholder Committee and Manager Fallon.
All right, Rhonda, can you, can you pull up the list, current list? It's the last document that we have, Quincy, if you can, if you can pull that up. All right, that's good. If you could, just scroll down to the second page, so the only member that's listed on the first page is Jekyll Island Authority, and that was, and that was Jones Hooks. All right, so this was a, this was a recommendation based on the comprehensive plan by the Coastal Regional Commission, and the Coastal Regional Commission that, that performs these comprehensive plans for, for other communities around the, around the state, recommended these positions be considered for nomination for our stakeholder committee. And so we reached out to the representatives from each one of these recommended organizations and got these names. In addition, we added some additional names that were recommended by Commissioner Booker, as you can see there, and this is the final list, I'm sorry, it was recently updated as latest this afternoon, based on waiting for some of the folks that were listed on here to get back to us with confirmation that they wanted to participate. So this is the final recommended list that we have for you to consider for the stakeholder committee for the comprehensive plan.
Commissioners, any comments on this proposed list?
Mr. Fallon, isn't the chairman also going to serve on that committee?
Well, I think we'll have to ask him now. So, Chairman, be added to this list, because yes, we, we did want to have at least one or two commissioners, and Commissioner Rafalski, in your role here, is as Bats chairman, so yes, we would add the chairman if that is the, the direction the board would like to go in, yes.
Commissioners, are we, we've heard where this list originated, there's been several added from county residents to this list to try to bring a good cross-section balance. Is there any other discussion? I entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we accept the list.
Have a motion by Commissioner Rafalski, second by Commissioner Fendig. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Commissioner Fendig?
Let's an eye.
That is unanimous. We move now to our public comment period. We have two speakers before us tonight. First is Mr. Julian Smith, please come forward and state your name for the record one more time tonight, please, sir, and you have five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, yes, I'm Julian Smith again. And I want to thank you all for adding more residents to the stakeholders list, because it was really a bad balance toward commercial interests, so that's a good thing. I've had a home on St. Simon's for 30 years. Off and on over the years, I attended meetings of this, of this board, more in the last 10 years or so than previously. My main purpose this evening is to thank you for letting the public know you really don't want to hear comments from them. You really don't want to hear comments from them, in terms of a public comment period, and you've just made it harder for citizens to come to you at the start of a meeting with public comments, now they have to come at the end. So why else would you move the restricted public comment period from the start of each meeting to the end of the agenda? It's bad enough you allow only three citizens to speak during the public comment period at any meeting, and no more than four at a time, and they have to jump through the hoop of signing up beforehand, and since only three can sign up, it's open to abuse if a county commissioner decides, I want to make sure I don't hear from folks, or it's going to try to stop something, so I'm going to have my, some of my friends get on to talk about the wonderful new ice cream parlor or some such. So, all right. Your official policy states that, quote, "Because there is a limited resource," unquote, you have a limited time resource, time is a limited resource. You have imposed these arbitrary restrictions in an effort, quote, "to conduct public comments in the most efficient and effective manner possible," unquote. That's not what you do. You're not doing it in the most efficient and effective manner. You've made it difficult for citizens to be effective in commenting to you. And now, since the comment can only be at the end of the meeting, citizens cannot look at the agenda for an upcoming meeting, get on the agenda to speak at the start of the public, start of the meeting, and say, please don't do this, please don't do that, or there's a problem with this, with this thing on which there is no public hearing. So what you've done is not efficient. All right. You waste times with all kinds of things. You waste time, some of you, by not being prepared, by not paying attention to the documents in front of you, asking questions that you should already have an answer to. I've seen this again and again. I don't blame you for not wanting to hear from me more than four times a year. I would hate to hear from me more than four times a year, that's why I don't talk to myself. No, you don't want to hear from me four times a year on any topics of my choosing, and there's a good reason for that. After all, I'm better educated than any of you. I've served more years in elected, elected or appointed office than any of you have, and I get little or no benefit from any decision you make. I don't have commercial interest, real estate interest, banking interest, legal interest, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, like so many of the people who are driving your decisions. And I, over the years, have attended many, many more meetings than any of you, perhaps more than all of you combined. When I was in high school in Phoenix, Arizona, back in the early 50s, as extra credit for my civics class, I used to attend meetings of the Phoenix, Arizona City Council, when there was a businessman named Barry Goldwater, who liked being on the city council so much, he ran for the senate! What a thing. Okay. So I do blame you for making it difficult for conscientious and well-informed citizens to speak to you before you make decisions, and I've gone over the time. Thank you for the extra time, thank you for not stopping me, I don't blame you for wanting to.
Our next speaker tonight is Mr. Winford Hill Jr. If you would come forward and state your name for the record, please. And you have five minutes.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Winford Hill Jr., and I'm here to bring something to y'all's attention. I'm here to address a concern about encroachment on a, and building on a 15-foot easement that's been in existence for over 50-plus years. The property is located in Jewtown on St. Simon's Island. The property address is 122 Oliver Lane with a 15-foot easement. We need the 15-foot easement to utilize the property like we have been doing for over 50-plus years. I'm bringing this to your attention to let you know that the other property owner is building a house on the 15-foot easement. I have proof with me of the existence of the 15-foot easement. Your attention to this matter will be appreciative and greatly appreciative, and I want to thank you. And what, what we are trying to do, me and my wife, and her parents' property, it's the Butts property next door, and what we are trying to do is correct a wrong and make it right. That's what we are trying to do. So we don't know what's going on, or who might have fumbled the ball and let this property owner build on a 15-foot easement that's been in, in existence for over 50-plus years. We don't know how this happened, and we've been using the easement. So it's stated in the property records, in the deed records at the property office there building, and I don't know what happened of what's going on, and this other property owner, the lady had died that used to own the property, and then her son died within a few years, but another cousin or something came in possession of the property, and he redid the whole deed to the property. He took out some stuff and put in some stuff, but I don't know how he got away with that stuff, you know? Somebody okayed him to, and gave him a permit to build on a 15-foot easement. How could that happen? I'm just trying to get answers. But something I feel, in the family feel, from the other property owners, how this happened? But something I feel in the family feel from the other property owners, how this happened? Could we correct this problem, this mistake that somebody has made? And I appreciate your attention on this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And Ms. Leaf, would you get with him to look at this address? And let's make sure that the permitting is correct on it. And get back to Mr. Fallon with that finding, please. Thank you. We do have call for executive session tonight for the matter of...
Property acquisition.
For the matter of property acquisition. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we go into executive session for property acquisition.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Rafowski, a second by Commissioner Clark. And all in favor, please raise your right hand. And Commissioner Finnegan, it is unanimous. We stand in recess.
Yes.
Need a motion to come out of executive session? Have a motion by Commissioner Booker, a second by Commissioner Raffowski to come out of executive session. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Do I have any motions?
Mr. Chairman, I move the Board of Commissioners to approve the executive session minutes from the January 5th executive session.
Have a motion by Commissioner Raffowski, a second by Commissioner Booker to approve the minutes of the...
January 5th, 2023.
January 5th, executive session. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I move the Board of Commissioners to approve the county attorney's recommendation regarding property acquisition.
Have a recommendation by...a motion by Commissioner Raffowski, a second by Commissioner Booker to approve the attorney's recommendation for property acquisition. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Do I have anything else coming before us?
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion by Commissioner Raffowski, a second by Commissioner Tosterson to adjourn. All in favor, please raise your right hand. We stand adjourned.